Tonight, we're going to be discussing in a committee meeting something that's probably as important to this county and this city as anything that we do. The state started about five years ago, I think, talking about our PSAPs and what we need to do. So they are going to, the state is taking the number of PSAPs down, the state down from one hundred and fourteen to seventy-nine. And what that means is some of your counties are having to, well, all work together. Like right now, in our dispatch center, we have Faulkner County, City of Conway, and then UCA is a separate PSAP. But under this new guideline, UCA would still be able to maintain theirs, but they'd have to pay for it themselves. But under this new guideline, Faulkner County and the City of Conway are going to have to join partnership on this and only have one PSAP. So Jim Baker has been a tremendous asset on this and worked really hard with us on this to get this up and running. He and I put together a task force, Chief Winter, Chief Tapley, Chief Harris. Chief Ledbetter was on at first, but County Rose got so busy, I had to kick him off. And he couldn't be that many places at once, but I appreciate all the work he did, Mark. Sheila Blott with the county. Charles has worked with us and the county attorney. And then Gene Earnhardt, I can't remember the rest of them, Preston Scroggins. But it was a really good mix of city and county. And they spent some time traveling, looking at other cities, and have brought the plan back. What I want them to do tonight is bring you up to speed on everything that they know, that what we're going to have to do as a city moving forward. And we have to have this plan before the state of Arkansas by January first of 2023. And we have to have this settled between the city and the county as to who is going to run it. If not, the state will come in and say, we're going to give it to this group. Now, whoever runs it will get all the nine-one-one money. Right now, it shows, according to Mr. Winningham, who is at a function tonight, it shows that there will be a shortfall of around four hundred and fifty thousand chiefs. Is that pretty close? Yeah, so it'll be a shortfall. We've been operating at a deficit between the city and the county, about nine hundred thousand annually. But they did start, they gave us an uptick in the money, an increase in the money for cellular phones. That has helped tremendously. I'm gonna go ahead and be the bad guy here, because this is going to have to be said. Right now, we're looking at a fifty-two percent split with the city and a forty-eight percent split with the county. However, I'm of the opinion, and this group here and the county's group will get to make that decision, I'm of the opinion that there needs to be a fair share payout on this. That means it can't just fall to Faulkner County and us. It's going to have to fall to Bologna, it's going to have to fall to Greenbrier, Mayflower, anybody that uses that dispatch center needs to pay their fair share. So if we can get to a break even on this, this is big, because like I said, this is our residents' first line of defense in emergencies to call down. It's also our first responders' first line of defense in keeping them safe, or police, fire, and EMS worker. So with that being said, Chief Winter, Chief Tapley, is Chief Harrison tonight? Okay. Anyway, if y'all would step up and just counsel when they get through, if you've got questions, please ask them.
Well, this shouldn't take long, because he said we were going to fill you in on all that we know. So this will be pretty short. This actually started probably back around two thousand and sixteen. At that point, we had a committee. Chief Spradlin was on it at that time, Chief Winter was on it. I sat in on a number of meetings. And what we were doing, we were looking at ways to make our dispatch center more efficient, more cost-effective. It wasn't, at that time, it wasn't just about consolidation. We were actually looking at privatization as well through I X D. For a number of reasons through the years, we just never could clear all the hurdles and get to where we needed to be. And so, fast forward to two thousand and nineteen, the state steps in and says, okay, we're going to come up with a consolidation plan to consolidate all of the PSAPs, the nine-one-ones in Arkansas. And so, they initially thought that they were going to do seventy-seven of those within the state. What they ended up doing after having federal engineering coming in, they looked at it and decided that they were going to do seventy-nine. All of the counties will have one, except for Pulaski County will have three, Benton County will have two, and Washington County will have two. What that means for us is that we have to consolidate with Faulkner County, as far as Faulkner County had been consolidating with us. We start out in a pretty good position, better than a lot of the places, because we already cohabitate. We're all in the same center. So that is one big hurdle that we don't have to try to figure out where we're going to go, where we're going to set up operations. So that's a big thing for us. Earlier in the year, the judge and the mayor set up a committee, steering committee, advisory committee, on where we should go, what we should do. And there's eleven people on that. As he said, there was a number from the county, there was a number from the city. And we sat down trying to figure this out and hash it out. It has to be done by January of 2023 and turned into the state. After it's turned into the state, then we have until January of 2025 to actually implement it. We've got this year to get our plans together. We then have two years in order to put it into action. We started in March of this year, our first meeting, all we did was we nominated a chairperson, which is Assistant Chief Chris Harris. I have to tell you, on the beginning, I have to brag on him. I don't think we would be where we are right now without him doing the things that he's done. He's done a tremendous job on this. April was our first actual meeting, and we discussed a number of things, the more important things in that meeting, and we took votes on them initially. What we discussed was that all of the money generated by the nine-one-one service fees, the phone fees that we get in each year, on both the county side and the city side, we believe should go one hundred percent back into that center. And that's what we should use to try to run the center. We voted on that, it was unanimous vote, eleven to zero. I think that is absolutely the right thing. Another thing that we voted on is that if those funds are insufficient, if we do not have enough money to make it to the year for our budget, we've decided that that should be based upon population. There was basically two different ways you can do it. You can base it on population, or you can base it on call volume. Everybody there felt that the correct way to do it would be on population, based on the most recent census. That puts us at a fifty-two forty-eight right now. The third thing that we talked about and voted on was that there is a differential between what city employees make as a telecommunicator and what county employees make as a telecommunicator. And we feel moving forward as a consolidated center, the person sitting on the other side of the desk from you that's doing the exact same job as you needs to be making the exact same money as you. So our recommendation on that is that the county employees would be raised up to be equal to the city employees in pay. So that pretty much took up our whole first meeting. The second meeting we had, we actually had HR from both the county and the city come in and talk to us, because we were discussing benefit plans, retirement, insurance, things of that nature, and we wanted to get a real good feel of what those were, because we have to make a decision as to who holds the PSAP, whether that's going to be the county or the city. They came in, they talked to us, we spent a couple of weeks looking at it, trying to determine on an individual basis what we thought was the best. We came back at the end of May to vote on it. When we started discussing it, there were a couple of members that felt that we needed to reach out to the employees and get input from them on it before we voted on it, so we postponed that vote for another couple of weeks. We did that, we went and talked to the city employees, they went and talked to the county employees, and we came back together. At that time is when we voted as to who was going to, it's basically, who's going to hold the budget? And this is the only vote, it wasn't a unanimous vote, but the vote was seven to four in favor of the city holding the budget. Now, what that means is the way we've got this figured out is that there will be a director over the center. That director will report directly to an executive board, which will be over the budgets and things of that nature. So it's not that we're going to fire all the city employees or we're going to fire all the county employees. Those employees will remain intact. All that it means is moving forward, as we get new employees, who do they go under? Do they go under the city plan or do they go under the county plan? And we decided the city plan. Now, for those employees that are with the county, if all this goes through, they will have a choice. They can either move over to the city plan if they would like, or if they would like to stay on the county plan, then they're allowed to stay there. And that's for a number of reasons, most of which would be retirement. You definitely don't want to take somebody that has vested in the retirement at a particular agency and then force them to move into someone else. So what would happen is, as we move forward, as those people retire or left for other reasons, as they come back in, they would be city employees. We based that on the model of Benton. We had gone and seen Benton PD, Celine County, they had merged for us, that is what they did, and we all thought that that was fair. So that's kind of what we settled on. We sat back, on July sixth, we went to Jonesboro. We went there to view their emergency operations there. The judge wanted to go up there, so we all loaded up and went. Real good operation. They have an advantage over us in the fact that they are not a new center, a new consolidated center. They told us that they have been doing this for almost thirty years. So we were able to see what they were doing, how they were doing it, and surprisingly, most of what we had come up with was exactly on track with what they did. They had a couple of differences. One, the executive board that they have was formulated a little bit different than what we had envisioned in our mind. And in addition to that executive board, they have an advisory board, which we had not thought of or had not considered. So we did bring those two things back. When we came back, Mayor Castleberry and the judge were able to talk about it, and they decided that that was the way that we should probably go. An advisory board, and then the executive board. Executive board would be made up of six members. It would be the county judge, the mayor, the police chief for Conway, the fire chief for Conway, the sheriff of Faulkner County, and then one mayor from outside the city that is elected by the other mayors within the county. So that would be a six-person board. That would be the executive board that the director would report directly to. The advisory board would be made up of different mayors from all the other cities in the county. Jonesboro does it just a little bit different. They actually have all the mayors, all the police chiefs, and all the fire chiefs, I believe, on that advisory board, but that makes for a huge board. And you guys know, the more people that is on a committee or a board, the less that actually gets done. So this would be made up of all the mayors of the different cities. And that's something that they both agreed on, and that's kind of where we see ourselves moving forward. From here, where we think we should go or what we think we should do is, there's an interlocal agreement that we are putting together. We had it put together, but with the new changes. Charles is going to make some changes on that. If the mayor and the judge both agree with it, with the way it's written up, then what we would do is we would bring it back before you guys, for you to agree upon. County would take it before the quorum court. If everybody agrees on it at that point, the next step that we really need to look at is finding a director and hiring that director. We need a singular person that is going to champion this and make sure that we are in step and on time for all of the deadlines that we have moving forward. We've talked a little bit about that. We're not sure exactly where that person comes from, but I believe we've talked about opening it up nationwide to see what kind of input, to see what kind of expertise we can get. Because truth is, we don't know what we don't know. And if we have somebody that has experience in that, then that will help us overall. When we start talking about the budgets, he touched on this a little bit earlier. Based on 2021 numbers, we would be about four hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars short. In 2021, the city, our budget was one point two seven million per COC. In PSAP funds, we brought in approximately eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The county brought in approximately eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. Now, that number fluctuates from year to year, it's based on cell phone usage. So we can't always guarantee that it's going to be that, it may be that, it may be higher, it may be lower. So we expect to start out with a deficit when we bring these two together. Our goal is to work with the director to try to come as close as possible to breaking even. I can't stand here and tell you that we can. I can't stand here and tell you how close we can get. We need somebody that's going to come in and look and see where we're duplicating costs, where we can cut things and build a more efficient program. And those things are what will lead us to cost savings, or at least to being able to break even.
Do you know how much the county's deficit is for operating their side?
So that's difficult, because the county actually breaks into two different budgets, is my understanding. Part of the money goes to OEM, part of the money goes to the sheriff's office. So I couldn't stand here and tell you exactly where they're at with it.
Because I would assume we'd absorb those expenses on their side and then get all the revenue, but I'm just trying to see how much.
Historically, it's been about four hundred thousand each. Yes, and nine hundred thousand total. Like I said, we expect on the front end for this to come up short on those funds.
Well, it already is.
It is, and I really think that as we move forward, looking at those cost-saving measures, we can make it better. But also pays you fair share.
Yeah, yes. And you may know the answer to this more than Chief Tapley does. So do we envision, once this is all kind of resolved, and assuming we are the entity that handles the budget, would it become a separate cost center? You know, like streets and the airport?
Yes.
Would be a separate thing? So pull out of the general fund? Where it is, okay.
Based upon that. I was reading something, Chief, so you may have touched on this, did you discuss with them the vote that the committee took?
Yes, I think I did.
I was, I was, I can't do two things at once.
Chief Tapley, yeah, okay, so say the employees, someone will go to the city of Conway, someone remain with Faulkner County. So all the salaries are going to be taken out of this pot of money for that. Okay, if we do a call raise on our city employees, what does that do for the people in county, for trying to keep them pretty much pay parity and all that?
So the idea would be to keep everybody parallel on pay. We could depend on Charles to come up with the wording and the legal aspect to make sure that us, however we move the money to pay for those employees and get that done, that would be up to him to figure out. I know it can be done, Celine County is doing it that way, so maybe we model after how they have it worded.
And bonuses, like Christmas bonuses? I mean.
The idea is they would, everybody would be under the city umbrella, and that they would all be paid the same. The bonuses would be the same, everything would be the same. Insurance would be different, obviously, if they're under the county, they can't be under the city insurance. But I don't know if it would be a reimbursement to the county, or if we're running in a deficit, maybe it's not a reimbursement, maybe it is that they're not putting in as much money based on those numbers.
The question is, does the city typically always give a call raise in the last seven eight years?
In the last six, y'all have been real good to give it to employees.
We didn't probably.
We have gone, we have gone a long time.
We went a long time with nothing. Yeah. That's what I'm saying, you're going to have to keep them equal. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I, that's, I don't want any animosity.
County employee there.
Under the city.
Right.
Then it's, now we're going to be able to.
Well, I mean, it sounds like we're paying. If we've got pot of funds, and we're in charge of getting everybody paid. We have a final number on that pot of money.
As far as.
As if we were to take this over January one, let's just say this year, I know we're not. What, do we have any idea what the funds generate?
So I can tell you what they generated last year, and it changes quarter to quarter. Last year, the city brought in eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The county brought in roughly eight hundred and eleven, eight hundred and ten, eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
One point six, right.
One point six, one point seven, somewhere in that area. So I can tell you a broad overview, I can't get into the weeds on it, but generally, it is out of cellphone funds, cellphone taxes that are on your bill each month, and that money comes in through that. There's a separate fund that comes in for landlines, but that fund is diminishing yearly. So that's where most of that money is coming from.
So the seller provider charges the tax on your bill, emits it to the state, and the state would fund it up to counties proportionately.
That's my understanding, yes.
But the city takes over, as the committee recommended, the check would come directly to the city.
So if someone that lives in a city, that is cell phone, or that's a different area, that generates a lot of things. I don't know the answer to that.
I wonder if it goes by billing address, not phone number?
Yeah.
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 That's a, that's a really good.
Well, I don't know, the answer to that's a good question. I don't know. We can get an answer.
I would think billing is right.
I would think billing is right.
Yeah. I have a question.
Sure.
So if we include all these other entities, Bologna, Greenbrier, such, that's in Faulkner County, I mean, are they even aware that this is happening right now?
Yes.
Okay, and they don't feel like they need to have any part, any say-so, what's getting, what's getting talked about right now?
It depends on who you're talking to. I know some that are very supportive of it, I know some that are not so supportive.
They want to stay with county and not have a city?
No, no, they just don't want to pay their fair share. Did I misunderstand your question?
No, no, no. No, I'm just, you know, we have a committee of eleven people, and I'm just thinking, we're making decisions for, we're going to hold them accountable to pay us, but I didn't know if they even knew this was happening and they were possibly going to have to pay us.
In their defense, in their defense, some of these smaller cities have a problem, you know, with their revenues, that's very understandable. And ever since we've had the nine-one-one system, the city has taken care of it, the city and the county has paid everyone else's. But now, under this new plan, everybody's going, we need everybody to pay their fair share. So you've gone from never having to pay anything to, oh, well, we may have paid thirty thousand dollars a year. So it will be a financial strain, which I do understand their concern with it, but we can't operate, we can't operate in a deficit. Previously, I think you just said, the county subsidizes those outside cities, they, we, the city of Conway didn't subsidize, for example, Faulkner County's, Hot Pocket subsidized. So the difference is, we weren't out anything before, we don't need to be out anything before.
Correct.
Another thing, Chief Tapley, whenever any calls come in, are they going to be dispersed in months, the nine-one-one operators, or, you know, county goes to county, city goes to the city ones?
Right.
Will it be just, everybody will be the same and you take the next call?
That is the thought, is that, one of the things that is important is that our computer aided dispatch systems are currently different. Moving forward, in order to optimize the center, we need to be on the same CAD system, and we have talked about that. We've talked about the county possibly moving to Southern software, which is what we use. There is a grant through the state that we might be able to utilize to get some money to help us with that. But in order for us to be the, we can run it without, we can run it with two different CAD systems. But in order for us to be the most efficient, cut down on the most number of transfers, and provide the best service for our communities, we need to be on the same CAD system. And that's an expense that we're going to be looking at. Hopefully, the state's going to help us out with that. We haven't really been focused on that, the fair share cost at this point. Our goal at this point has been to get this consolidation plan together, based on how we are going to run things up there, as far as the CAD system, as far as a director, as far as the governance of it, so that we can get this together and before the state, before January, because that's when they say we have to do it. And we have to get moving.
Oh, yeah.
And back, let me back up a little bit. I've only talked to two of the mayors, and they've been pretty good. Preston Scroggins understands it. I've not had a chance to speak with the Greenbrier mayor, but I will. Sammy's a good guy to talk to.
I understand that this.
Pardon me? Sammy Hart, yeah, he's the mayor of Greenbrier.
This is a collaborative effort between county and cities. It's a good thing. It's the way the state's going to make us do it, we don't have a lot of choice, it's a good thing. But I wonder if this is a concern, if we control the budget, it's basically the city department, and we can have county employees, and we can service the county, but if we control the budget, it's the city department. Now, directly or indirectly, every city employee answers to the mayor. The people answer to you, and you answer to him. The people answer to you, and you answer to him. This director doesn't answer to him, he's a city employee. So I don't know how.
He's going to answer to that executive board, which is, oh, it's creeps.
Well, but we're the ones paying people, and we're the ones that ultimately have the possibility.
Well, we're going to have three out of those six people that work for the city, and the other two work for the county, and then one, whoever comes in.
I see your point.
I don't know how that's going to work either, you know?
So the way that Jonesboro has it set up is, as far as day-to-day operations, that director still answers to, I believe it is the police chief up there, on day-to-day things. If it was something bigger, budget, things like that, then it goes before the executive committee. So the small things, the day-to-day, that you can't get together with a board every single time, still goes before the police chief to handle those things, and then the larger things go to the executive board.
How does that board, how do they approve the budget to have it come?
So it's difficult.
It's a good question.
What has to happen is that the director would bring the budget to the executive board. The executive board would review it, beginning to see if there was anything that didn't need to be or needed to be. If the executive board agreed on it, in which part of that board is the judge, part of that board is the mayor, then they would bring it before the council and the quorum court. So if there's a deficit, the quorum court still has to say, yes, we're going to pay that and budget that. Same, same's here, city council would have to say, yes, this is the budget, we approve this, instead of, or no, we don't approve it, yes.
The quorum court still plays a big part.
Absolutely. It is a joined effort all the way through.
Charles is going to have that one.
It's not that it's not going to be difficult, it's just, it just has to be done.
And like I said, this is one thing we have to have right from day one.
Do all the smaller cities, and I know Greenbrier does, and Bologna, and Mayflower, do all of them have separate police forces and separate fire departments?
So.
I'm just thinking about the.
Right. I believe, and he can probably, he can definitely talk more about this than I can. I believe outside the city, it's all volunteer fire departments.
Twenty-three volunteer departments. Greenbrier has paid members now.
Bologna.
And Bologna, Greenbrier, Bologna, yeah.
But yes, there are twenty-three that the county currently just has.
So I was just thinking, when you were talking about the fair share, I can see if you have police, police force, any size, any kind of need for fire dispatch, that you should pay your fair share for that service, because that's bigger than the county. Yeah.
And Greenbrier, and Bologna, and Mayfair, they're all fairly busy cities. They have a lot going on.
So I was thinking more about, you know, like, you know, some of the small, I just didn't know if they had, like, one police officer, you know, I just don't know.
Also, though, their populations are going to be.
Small, aren't they?
Very small compared to anything within the city or the larger cities in the county.
And we're not talking about a huge sum of money on the fair shares. I don't even know, yeah, no, I don't think, I don't know what those numbers are, no. Have y'all had any conversations, I know we did earlier, with UCA? You kind of know where they are on this?
We actually had a meeting with UCA. We actually had a meeting with, uh, U C A and, uh, nine one one executive board director a couple of weeks ago. And they're in the, they're in the determining nation's phase of figuring out whether they're going to remain a P S A or not. U C A is a P S A, but they're fully funded, uh, by themselves. And they're trying to figure out whether that is a benefit to them or whether it would be better to go under the umbrella of everybody else. And I don't know that that's a decision that they would make yet.
I'd also like to thank, uh, is it D J with the state?
C J.
C J and, uh, A J Gary. They've been very good to answer questions anytime we've, we've had any.
Yes, we've still got a long ways to go before January. But, uh, that's, we've, we've done really good in the last few months. The next step absolutely is getting that interlocal agreement drawn up and before you guys in the quorum court, um, so that we can start moving forward.
Mr. Hawkins, I'll get you an answer on your question. That's a good one. Yeah. Any other questions for either of the chiefs? Okay, counsel, we got about 25 minutes, so.